Oh yeah, because it's going to look good for him then.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, we'd like to welcome everybody tonight to the meeting and we'll start the meeting with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start with the approval of the agenda. Any additions or changes, Dan?
I have nothing.
Great.
None for me.
Right. No, anything? No, okay. Entertainer motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Dwayne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda. Any questions for the administrator on the consent agenda? Entertainer.
To approve.
Thanks, Dwayne. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Visitors to the council, Tanya, if you just want to come up to the podium and...
Hello.
Hey, Tanya.
Thanks for letting me come and present tonight. I sent this stuff over, so you should have.
Mm-hmm.
We're just, we're having a second part of our Cruisin' for Cancer that we had in June because unfortunately we had rain the 25th of June after two weeks. So, and our church, St. John's Lutheran, is booked on September 25th with our Fall Fest. So, we have wanted to support local businesses in this effort and so we are partnering with the Carson American Legion, which is awesome because we're using their color guard. And so they suggested that it would look really nice to and more appealing to have our car show right in front on Main and then possibly if we had too many cars, to have it right across by the theater as well. And that's from 12 to 5:00. And so with also our motorcycle ride taking off at 10:30 from the Legion. So we were just asking if it was okay if we would just basically like a block or half a block be closed down for our cars to be parked there.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Tanya or concerns?
Josh, do you have anything?
Yeah.
Concerns about the closure of the street for that period of time?
Yeah, so I think as long as we let police, fire, county, everybody knows it's going to be closed. I think you need to close the whole block, otherwise you're going to get people driving halfway down and turn around. And then public works, Charlie can get some signs out there on the night before so you can just flip them and close the road.
Um, we will have the Dodge County Sheriff is involved with the ride, so
Okay.
so there will be on hand as well.
We can have some barricades if they are able to just set them out in the morning.
Yeah, because what they usually do like for festivals, they'll set them out the night before when they leave at 3:30.
Right.
Along the side on the sidewalk, then you've just got to pull them around and close it. I would talk to Darren at the theater, let him know because if he's got a movie that only does date during the weekend, does he?
I think our event ends at 6:00 and I think theirs starts at 7:00, but I'll double check it.
Yep, just let him know it could be closed for 12 to 5:00 or so, so. Anybody else have any questions or concerns? Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Yep, good luck.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll do that administratively then.
Yeah, I think we just directed, amended to there. We don't need a motion. And then just left the fire department note too, so if they're responding or what they're doing.
They can take an alternate route.
Mayor's report. The only thing I have there is just, and Tim had something on his report too about the festival. Festival went pretty good. I think it was well attended for the year we had with a few events being canceled due to the lack of volunteers. But I think the people that showed up had a good time and the weather was great. I know we're probably going to start a gambling, it was anonymous for all the people that played bingo on Saturday, but that was pretty good. The pavilion was full up there the whole time.
I want to have like five more tables.
Yeah, I looked up there one time and I said, holy smokes, look at all the people playing bingo.
Yeah, we'll have to request next year to have more tables if we can.
Yep. So, everybody did a great job. City staff, they go, the parks look good again. So, anybody have any feedback? Just give that back to Tim.
Any tips on technique for the belly flop?
Yeah, I think Tim, he was a sport. He participated in the kickball tournament Friday night and I said, boy, probably better belly flop Saturday.
Go talk to John Hazuka.
And he did. So, hey, just doing it is winning, so you won. Hope the bruises have healed.
Oh yeah. Be with your face, that's what they say.
No. Bad technique, bad advice. So, but thanks for being a sport and doing that too.
Absolutely, it was a lot of fun.
It was good. Now, next year you have to do it with the high heels like the gal dressed up like she was in Greece.
No.
She did the whole diving board in high heels. Very impressive, I hear.
Not doing it.
So, but thanks for that. Festival went great. Onto old business, budget discussion, cash and investment summary. So, everybody's had a chance to look at the preliminary budget. Any comments sort of going on? Dan, did you have anything you wanted to bring up specifically?
Uh-uh, not right now. Nothing jumped out at me.
Okay. Dwayne, anything specifically or?
No.
No. Ryan, anything specific?
Uh, no, nothing.
Anything? Okay. I have a couple of things. I know you're probably surprised at that, but a couple of things. On the preliminary budget analysis, the impacts of budget, we talked about the arena, budgeting $25,000 a year for 10 years for the R22 refrigeration. Is there a possibility that we may not have to do that? Because our conversation's on the arena committee. I know we meet next Wednesday, but there's a possibility that we could get that redone versus replaced?
Yeah, I mean, I think that obviously the council in the past has planned on that. There's a possibility that could change. I don't know how likely it really is.
Okay.
I had a meeting with the ice arena manager and he discussed the positives and negatives to it and he's still not gotten me a 100% case if they don't end up replacing it with that. We've been looking at a mixed blend that might require, you know, not require it to be replaced, but yeah, I guess that's the best information I have for you right now.
All right. And I think we answered my own question. So, the library. There's a huge increase in insurance with no new employees being added. Is that because we have people changing insurance plans? Or, because it's like 26,000?
Some of that was with the new person they added this year and, you know, it can change out between single and family, so it is.
Sure, so it's just a function of that, okay. All right. It just jumped out at me because it was
Yes.
$26,000 higher just for that. And their stuff is all just assumptions. So, as far as the 11.6%, I mean, I'd like to see that come down to under 6% just for affordability with the taxpayers because I think about 5.95, 5.92, somewhere in there. With the new property coming on the rules, if somebody's valuation stays the same, they should realize zero increase in city taxes if we get to that number. So that's kind of a bogey I'd like to see. Because we aren't cutting any service. A final, yeah, for a final. So, but I think staff did a good job putting this together for us and we'll see what we can do over the next couple of months as we negotiate and we get our final health insurance number.
That's going to be a big impact.
Yep.
Nancy has taken some pretty conservative approaches based off of our feedback we received last year. We did take kind of a higher number and put that in. We're hoping that that number is a little bit lower, but we also know that the utilization by staff has been substantial. So that experience multiplier isn't really dropping like we would like it to. And so, you know, we're not sure exactly what will happen, but that's something will be, I'm not sure if we'll get that. I think we'll get that early next month, I think, Nancy, don't we?
Health insurance?
Mm-hmm.
Check with Linda.
Okay.
Yeah, it's usually October.
October, yeah. So, we may end up taking a little bit of a number and then hopefully be able to cut that down. A couple, just, you can see where the big percentage spikes are. And just because it's a larger percentage spike doesn't necessarily mean that it's a huge amount of money. One thing to keep in mind, for example, is elections. We didn't really have any elections this year, so even though you see a large percentage increase, you're all cognizant of the fact that it's from a low baseline. Some of the larger increases are, I mean, I know the police department has a little bit larger increase. They're looking at some staffing additions. That's something we can take a look at. And some of the larger reductions are because of how we reallocated some of the staff. The mayor asked me about the parks area line item. Were you seeing about an 18% reduction in aggregate levy? And about $75,000. And part of that is because we reallocated some of the staff costs to other areas. We've kind of, we're looking at having basically a blended staff. We have staff members in the streets department that do parks, parks that do streets. And because of that, the balance has changed a little bit. Other than that, you know, we are looking at a very, outside of some of those larger, much larger increases with a couple of departments, we're looking at a pretty flat amount. But it's pending our union contracts as well, so we don't know what wages are going to look like yet either, so.
Is now a good time to bring up that Ronnie has talked to park board about an increase in salary for lifeguards of that budget proposal number?
I think it's in here already.
They did increase it.
Is that increase, it's an increase?
Yeah.
Is that?
Well, I mean, we are looking at basically what we're trying to do with that and I'm not sure. We can go into more detail about that if you'd like. Basically what we're looking at is we are looking at an increase, so the budget line item has increased in terms of salaries. We're also looking at taking a look at how we can match the increase in wages to a potentially reduction in utilization. Right now we have a pool that's open, you know, the recommendation from staff that I've received is to reduce the hours in the evenings because we're just not seeing the use, especially after 6:00 PM. We had a number of lifeguards who said, hey, there's just nobody here. So there ends up being, you know, seven lifeguards and 12 people in the pool. And so what we may be able to do is we may be able to not see quite as large of a spike total because we'll be reducing the hours down slightly and taking some of those wages from those two hours and moving it into the increased wages for the staff that are there. Partly what we're trying to do is because we just had so many staffing issues this year, is we're trying to get to one, basically eight-hour shift. And if we can get that one eight-hour shift, it doesn't tax the staff quite as much. Whereas right now, a lot of people have got either split shifts where they work the morning and they come back, which in modern day is just not, it's not feasible for a lot of kids where they have camps and things like that. If we can get that one shift where they can just work eight hours and be done, it makes it a little easier. And, you know, absolutely we'll be taking these, I mean, the next step for us is to take all these to their committees and that sort of thing and take a look at it. But that's kind of what we're looking to do, so.
Yeah, that's fair. I was just curious.
No, very good comment.
Okay, anybody else? Anything else on the budget? Okay, keep working. Thank you. Administrator's report.
All right. Jumping down quick there. A lot of items ongoing. Let me get down to that. As I mentioned, we'll have a little bit of that discussion later about the negotiations with staff. Certified LGA amounts are out. We've kind of taken a conservative approach on that too. Although it does look like the state budget will have a surplus. Right now they're projecting a surplus, so we're hopeful that that support remains strong. Dustin Park mentioned that already. Let's see what else have we got here. This is going to be interesting to see. We've talked with our planning consultants a little bit about this. Representative Elkins from Bloomington has got some legislation for a special session that he's hoping to bring up which would restrict some of the ability for cities to govern zoning. It might also provide some benefit in terms of dedicating street improvement districts, which we've talked about in the past. So, that's something that we'll just be following as that goes. I think September is when they've set for that, that special session, so. Other than that, you've talked about budgets mediation. That was a, that was a long process. The city engineer and I sat through a long period, but it was, it was productive. It was, it was interesting for sure. I did include also in here just to show you kind of the taxes. This is always interesting and it's not apples to apples necessarily, but it is important for me to see where we're trending. And you can see some comparable cities in our area. They aren't necessarily all the same size, but they're definitely in our area and you can see kind of where the taxes are. So, you can see, for example, in Carson, over the last three years, the tax, the city taxes have actually been reduced. And that's our goal again this year is to see a, to see a reduction in that taxes as we see more growth in the community. Other than that, I don't have a lot else to add today. I'll take any questions if there are any questions for sure.
Nope. Thank you. Liquor store remodel project?
All right, that's a good one. I am tasked today to ask for volunteers if anyone would like to. We're looking at, obviously Highway 57 is looking, being redone and the city engineer will talk about that a little bit more tonight. We had, and I think I emailed this out to you last week, a report come back on the roof, which is very substantial cost, about $70,000. That got us sort of thinking at a staff level about doing some, if we're going to have that kind of cost, we might as well look at a larger project there. It does need a facelift. The building is aged. We have some serious storage capacity issues there. And so, I know Kathy is interested in doing a project now where we have some available funds. And also, she's contemplated that, you know, timeline for her personally makes it more sensible to do it now than later. So, I think that's kind of what we're looking for is if the council's interested, if there's any council members that are interested in being part of a, part of a process where maybe we would talk to an architect or somebody like that and see kind of what it could look like if we decided to do some more remodeling. It's just, right now the building is, it's functional, but it's aging badly. It's got a lot of leaks and there's a lot of issues. So, with a new, you know, kind of entry to town, we want to make sure that Main Street looks as good as it can. And that's sort of what we're looking at is kind of maybe something like that. So, she asked me to talk to the council and see if anyone was interested. You can think about it. Let me know. Just email me or whatever and I don't know what it'll look like quite yet, but we may have some, some time where we get to sit down and kind of look at some pictures and things like that, so.
What, the existing footprint?
Um, we would be looking at expanding the footprint, but it would be at the existing site, generally speaking, I think. The city engineer was able to confirm that we do have some property that's on the south side of the building towards the railroad tracks. It does belong to the city. There was some question about that. So we do feel like there's an expansion potential, especially for freezer space and for some office space where it's kind of pretty minimal right now. They have some issues with access and dropping of deliveries and things we might want to be able to solve. So that's kind of what we're looking at. Earlier this year, if you recall back in, I think it was November or December of last year, we got the report from the folks that she had hired last year that had followed up and looked at different sites. And they looked at four different sites. And they had said that they felt the best site was still on the current plat. They looked at the Shopko site. They looked at a couple of other ones. Looked at foot traffic and our market share and they felt that was still the highest foot traffic area, so. So let me know if you've got any interest, please. Otherwise, it's going to look like, you know, kind of, I don't know, art deco, that's what I'm going to go with.
And this is, and this project will be funded out of liquor store funds?
Yeah, yes.
Correct. Because they have reserves for that.
That's correct, yeah. That would be, I mean, it also would give us the ability if we were able to do this. And I, part of the calculation is that we don't know what the cost is right now. However, we've been saving towards something like this for some time. If the cost comes in, in a manageable way, we may be able to utilize some of those funds for other projects.
Sure.
Which would be a positive. I mean, we're, you know, we have those funds for use. They're not just to sit there. Especially with this interest rate environment that we're in, it's not beneficial.
So it's already funded and there's no tax?
Potentially, yeah. There wouldn't be any tax implication. We're not anticipating any tax implications whatsoever.
Okay. Thank you. Engineers' report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. A couple of items tonight, so may spend a little bit of time, but I'm not going to go into all the details, but I'm more than happy to go into details as needed, so. First and foremost is our Mastin Creek report. In your council packet is a draft flood study report that we put together. We have not yet met with staff and they will meet tomorrow morning to go over it. I just wanted to quickly give a high-level review of that report. It has been before the council before with respect to the bonding bill requests, which are the last two pages of the report that we've included in the report if you want to kind of refresh your memory in the last two pages there. So with that said, I don't want to go into all the details, but feel free to interrupt me or raise your hand if you want me to jump into more details. I'll just kind of talk to the table of contents in the report and then kind of conclude again with the bonding bill requests that you've seen before and that we've submitted to the bonding bill people. With that said, what we are looking for in the recommendation and the request for council action tonight is direction on moving forward with the permitting and funding for the project. Obviously, we have the bonding bill requests that we're putting together. Mr. Senjum, Mr. Quam did mention to us to keep this project moving forward as recommended. With respect to funding, there is refunding and permitting. There is a possibility we can't get this permitted, so the more that we get out in front of that with the different regulatory agencies, the better. So we know what hurdles and jumps we need to go through as we move forward. And that'll look good this fall when the bonding tour is in town to say that we've met with the DNR. We met with the DOT. We met with the Army Corps, et cetera, for this project, so. Any questions or I'll just quickly go through the report. Perfect. So, I'll go again, table of contents. There's overview of why we're here. Obviously, significant flooding in town has been the council's direction. For us to solve truly the flooding problem, this isn't necessarily a water quality project, you know, that has some benefit and some interest of the council. But to provide some significant flood relief is the point of the project. So that was a quick background on the project. We talked about study area, some existing conditions, which again, I won't go into the existing conditions. We all know what they are. Significant flooding. So we did a feasibility study, collected data, looked at different mitigation methods. And you can see that we have a lot of different methods that we looked into. Flood plan excavation, excavated wetlands, community approach, putting rain gardens across the city, converting agricultural land cover to going from like row crops back to prairie, that is significantly less runoff. Buying out properties along the corridor, increasing the channel capacity along the corridor. Those are all things that we looked at, but ultimately we came back to a recommendation which is provide a large flood control structure immediately upstream of Highway 14. The reason why that project is really the only feasible option is that we have a significant flooding impact that we're trying to reduce. So that's why we came to the recommendation. All those other things are all nice, but we just can't get the proverbial drop in the bucket is what those other projects were resolved in with respect to flooding. So we kind of said, well, there's not a good bang for the buck there. Let's, let's look at this larger project. So, that is the recommended project. And obviously that was before you counseled previously and directed to move forward the bonding bill request. We did look at 4.3 there as funding and financing. We did list out a lot of different funding options. And you can see a lot of those talk about that these are funding options that these agencies may have, but either they're too hard to get and we'll spend too much money doing it, or they're too competitive that we likely are not going to get funded. So we think the bonding bill is our heavy lifting, if you will, for funding. And then we're relying, we meet with the DOT, talk about their permitting. We'll also continue to talk about what funding opportunities that they may have, thinking that there is a benefit or the DOT could see some benefit there. And if you read about that funding opportunity, that hasn't been funded from the DOT. So those are all just questions that we'll ask along the way. We're not going to put all of our eggs in the bonding bill basket, but we feel that that's really the, the best funding opportunity the city would have. So that's the big picture. Any questions about maybe the nuts and bolts report or if you want me to go into any other options or questions or comments? No news?
No, it looks good. I mean, yeah, it looks good.
So the mayor did mention he fell asleep reading it this weekend.
I read it all, but I did fall asleep twice.
So, didn't want to fall asleep again. So with that, so again, what are we looking for? Council direction on proceeding with the recommendations, which again are reaching out to these funding agencies, starting the conversation about what do we need to do for not only funding, but also permitting to the different regulatory agencies. So, again, looking for some direction from the council on that. It's not going to be a huge effort. You know, we've obviously made a pretty significant effort here to put this report together, to get this in front of our local representatives in the form of the bonding bill. So I think it's really the next step to get there. And then once we have something funded, then we can talk about actually going through the permitting process because that's obviously going to be more intensive with respect to getting the project off the ground and truly permitted, so.
Okay. Any questions for Brandon on that?
I would like to see us follow through on our promise to the taxpayers that we were going to do something about the flooding. So, I'll make the motion to have you proceed with the permitting process and the recommendations.
One second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you for working on this and I think we have a really good chance after talking with Senjum Quam on getting this bonding bill, so.
Absolutely.
One of the things we'll do then is we'll also, as directed by the council, follow up with some of the property owners in the area to make sure that they're cognizant of some of the plans that we may be putting into place. We know there's a possible impact to them, especially downstream from the city or upstream from the city, so.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving on then.
Highway 57 project, I wanted to give a quick project update. And then there is another item in their geometric review in the two documents within your council packet or what MINDOT calls a geometric submittal, or a geometric layout for the proposed improvements. So before I jump into those, what, big picture, where we're at, this project has kind of been in limbo. We've delayed it a year due to COVID and some other scope changing that we'll talk about. But we are planning spring construction. We're kind of looking at, we've made it over the hump here to have this geometric layout put together for MINDOT review in concurrence. We're kind of going to move into final design, final plan production for bidding the project out this winter with spring construction. The plan is for the city and MINDOT to work on the plans, finalize the plans. We're going to hand those over to MINDOT. MINDOT's going to bid and let the contract and deal with the construction during the construction season all of next year. The city will have some involvement with our private utilities, but generally the MINDOT will be holding the contract and there'll be an agreement coming back to the city council. So that's the big picture. We're over that big hump. I'll jump into the geometric and then talk about next steps. Go ahead.
I think you and I talked about this much, but they're aware of the fair in July and stuff like that as far as having access to the fairgrounds and?
Absolutely. We've had conversations with the Dodge County engineers, some of our construction staff, MINDOT construction staff and MINDOT themselves about closing down the corridor. We are proposing it to be closed down. Utility construction is very difficult to do during traffic along with building roundabouts. So the current plan right now is to likely have three phases. One phase is the railroad tracks to the south, the County 34 roundabout we'll talk about in a bit. And then from 7th, which is the north park in the pool, the little off-center intersection there to the north. And then kind of the middle section of 7th down to, again, the railroad tracks through Main Street. My initial thought, and this is something that we'll have future discussions with the school and the fair board on as we kind of wrap up the phasing, is do the County 34 roundabout first. Detour traffic out to the dump road during construction, have some temporary access signage, excuse me, to the school to get school traffic through there. That'd be phase one. Phase two would be 7th up to 11th, the north end of the project along the fair there. Have that wrapped up before the fair starts, so that'll all be paved back in. And then kind of go through the middle section. That middle section's a significant portion of the project. So, that would be more of like a fall timeline and have that wrapped up during the next construction season, so.
Okay.
That's what I envision, knowing that we have the fair to deal with. It's probably the biggest hindrance with the project. Not to mention the 34 roundabout causes some other traffic stuff, but we'll work through that.
You anticipate they would start then in May for the construction season after the road restrictions come off?
Yeah, absolutely, yep. So we're going to have this thing bid, February bidding is what is planned right now. So it's going to be bid, you know, hard winter. So we're going to have all spring to kind of get everything prepared, get the contractor on board and move it forward, so.
It just seems like an aggressive timeline to get that amount of work done before the fair starts. I mean, it's doable, obviously, depending on weather, but this sure would have been a problem, but.
There'll be multiple crews doing the work.
Yeah, I suppose with the state project. And how does that work exactly? They're going to be coordinating like tree removals and things like that, that sort of thing?
Tree removals will be on the plan, but at the end of the day, they will be doing the construction observation administration. They'll hold the contract with the contractor. We will have involvement. The city will have involvement with respect to our private utilities. And then we'll probably have some sort of liaison with the citizens, I would imagine. And there'll be weekly construction meetings for staff.
Sure.
But at the end of the day, it will be a MINDOT project with us helping out with the utility side of things. So, all things will work out this winter as we finalize the plan, so.
Very good.
So with that said, I'll, I may jump into the geometric and talk about that a little bit and then kind of what's, what the council can expect for next steps, so. So again, two geometrics. The first one's labeled north of Main. This is a document that I mean, won't put you to sleep, this is a little prettier than the last document and less words, but this basically shows big picture on what we're doing. Shows the road in yellow there. If you're looking at it, then purple's the sidewalk and then in red is the curb and gutter. Section north of Main Street, what we are looking at doing, what's been kind of decided in the past and conveyed and through, we had a citizens advisory committee that provided some recommendation to the council and it was discussed and provided direction to move forward with kind of changing the cross-section of that road. Currently, we have a lane in each direction and parking. Looking at eliminating that parking lane, providing that center through lane was one of the decisions that were made due to the lack of the use of the parking there or limited use of the parking. So, I thought that was a better section for everybody there. We are also looking at widening that sidewalk to a six-foot sidewalk there due to the usage through there. Lighting, providing some additional lighting along the corridor consistent with like our 16th Street lighting. That's been a nicely lit corridor to have something similar. So we're moving through with the city's electrical consultant that works on the lighting, on the past lighting projects to make that lighting consistent. So, that's the highlights of the section north of Main Street. And I'll jump to the other document that's south of Main Street and that's the roundabouts at Main Street and Casaw 34. That's, you know, been some discussion in the past about the kind of the scope change that we had there. Initially, we're going to replace the signal at Main Street. As we got into this, MINDOT and I guess also WHKS came back to the city and said, hold on here, we think we might want to change some things. MINDOT came to the table and said, yeah, we're really excited about this. This is something that they wanted to support and provide some additional funding for. And as it's pulled up on the screen there, you can see, those are two roundabouts there. The roundabout at 34, you can see it's a skewed intersection, which makes it really attractive to traffic engineers to get traffic through a skewed intersection. One of the things when we first met with a public engagement meeting, when we first had one, everybody says, why don't we move the signal to 34? And that kind of surprised me. I had not tried to get on Highway 57 from County 34 at 5:30 at night. And then I quickly realized why there should be a signal there. Signals have their advantages, disadvantages, and ultimately we recommended through a report to do the roundabout at 34. I think that's really going to be an attractive feature to the city, kind of bookend, kind of the, you drive off of Highway 14 to a nice commercial wide area there. and also, we have a bookend to kind of our core part of town. So with that said, we're moving maybe to the Main Street intersection there. You can see we have a mini roundabout in the blue area there, shows the island and kind of the splitter islands there that, as you enter into that roundabout, those will be surmountable for larger truck traffic. We did talk about, MINDOT about leaving the signal there and putting a roundabout at 34. Signals and roundabouts don't necessarily play well together with respect to traffic. So we do have a mini roundabout there. That, I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna have almost 100% support of the roundabout at 34. With that said, my dad did call me last night, or I talked to him, he complained about roundabouts as he drove his RV and semi-trailer through a roundabout. But he ultimately concluded that I was probably right, roundabouts were good, but he was just mad because he hit a curvy. With that said, again, 100%, I think we're gonna, near 100% at 34. The Main Street's gonna be a little funky, a little different to citizens with respect to it, being in a center island, that trucks are gonna go up and over. With that said, they're becoming more and more popular. Couple of them are in the city of Rochester, they really like them. There was just anyone in Oatana I drove through that I wasn't aware of.
Is there anybody in the Mexican restaurant up there?
Yep, there's one there, and then farther to the west off of Parkway, what's that, Mineral Parkway?
Mineral Springs.
Mineral Springs Parkway, that kind of comes in from the northeast, south of Plaza Moreno there. So they become more and more popular, and I think it's really gonna play well with 34 once we get that traffic continually moving through that intersection. It's just gonna be a little different for our heavy vehicles. But I think overall, it's gonna be a great addition to the city. Any questions on the geometric before I jump into kind of the next steps? Again, I don't, didn't go into, you know, the exact details.
Well, I know there was a question about parking, we can take a look at that later. I just had a little question with the one on 34, or not on 34, on Main Street, on the, would be on the ABLE sign building there, kind of to, that, looks like it cuts in there. Would we be just building up into that, or what would we be doing there, kind of feather that in, or what?
Yeah, we would. Assuming you're talking about the southeast quadrant there.
That's right, yep.
Which is the lower left, as you look at the picture there. We would be looking at putting a sidewalk through to the crossing there. But that, there is that building, I think, is in the right-of-way, so we would be blending into that kind of apron there.
Sure.
And then ending the sidewalks, it doesn't continue east down Main Street, on the south side of Main Street. So we do need to get that crossing in there, and the crossing's kind of the blocked-out area there. So you see on a roundabout, the crossing's kind of away from the intersection there. They're really nice because they provide an island or a place of refuge for people crossing traffic there. So that is kind of a characteristic of a roundabout, so.
And I really like the safety component, because I mean, I just see how busy this is. It's amazing how many kids are going up and down to QuickTrip, or Casey's, or whatever, and they're on their bikes, or they're not always paying attention. Thankfully, we have drivers who generally do, although, you know, there's drivers who need to slow down a little bit, too, so.
Absolutely. And this will help them slow down going through a roundabout. It's not necessarily here, we'll have a bigger advantage at 16th Street, but these roundabouts, it's one of the advantages of a roundabout, is they do slow down people. I just heard a kind of random, not a random statistic, but from MINDOT, an interesting statistic is, MINDOT is not aware of any fatalities in a roundabout in the state of Minnesota, which surprised me, because where do we put roundabouts? We put them at dangerous intersections. More in the real community, this isn't necessarily an intersection we've had fatalities, but the idea that there is a huge safety component to roundabouts. And the 34 intersection is a round, is an intersection that is elevated. There is increased crashes at 34, more than kind of the state average, if you will. So I think this is gonna help that, albeit they may not be as fatal as some of the more higher-speed intersections, but it'll provide a safety benefit for sure on 34 there.
How many parking spots are you losing towards the west?
I, the mayor's taskman ended up before the meeting, I'm not sure of the number. Something we'll look at, and how will that kind of taper, can be tapered potentially different in there? That's something I'm gonna look at. We're gonna go to the west of Main Street, knowing that it kind of are a premium there, so.
Well, there's a lot of traffic going across the street, walking back and forth to that parking lot.
So that's for the parking, or, I'm sorry, the pedestrian walks across. We talked a little bit before, are those signaled, where you push the button and then wait, and then you walk across? Or is it just kind of free-for-all, back and forth, and it's up to the traffic to stop?
I'm not sure if we've added that in there. You're referring to the signals that we have on 16th Street?
Well, on Main Street right now, you push the button and it says walk, or don't walk?
Oh, I'm sorry. So if they are added, it'll be similar to 16th Street? Push the button on 16th Street?
Oh, I gotcha.
All right, it's cool.
Yep, yep, gotcha, they don't have the flashing.
The flashing system, yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
So it will not have a pedestrian?
Walk, don't walk.
Walk, don't walk, correct.
All right.
So it'll be, you know, think of roundabouts free-flowing, the pedestrians are kind of free-flowing. That said, again, one of the bigger benefits, and it's probably more of a benefit at 34, you can see when those center splitter islands, it splits the traffic as they enter and leave the roundabout. Those crosswalks have refugees, refuge on those islands where they can stop at the splitter island, let the next car go, and then cross that other lane, so.
It is nice, it narrows up your crossing, and right now, you're coming out there on the sidewalk and walking between two cars and out into the traffic, because you don't go to the corner and take the crosswalk.
Absolutely. Pedestrian and Americans with Disabilities Act review, this is a big benefit to the community with that aspect. Those are two things I'll look into, parking and then what the crosswalks are. Don't know if they're gonna be added or not.
Yep, and with, is there work going on in the parking lot by the liquor store? Is that being paved or whatever with this project, too?
So two things at the liquor store, it's not, doesn't really show up on this geometric, it's not on MINDOT's right-of-way, so they don't, you know, it doesn't really reflect on how the road lays out, so we don't include it on here. But we are looking at replacing the wall along the parking area there. Provides some beautification to that wall. With that said, it's not much of a wall, I mean, it's a little bit of a wall. So we're gonna put some different stamping on a port-in-place wall with a new cap, and Tim and I and staff have looked at that. So we'll be looking at making that wall a little bit nicer. And then the corner there, on the very east end of the parking lot there, it really gets pinched, you can't park there anyway. And it's kind of a messy, dirty intersection, is part of the community group that we met with, the citizen advisory recommended that we kind of have a place where we have some plantings there, so we have a couple shrubbers there with some mulch on the kind of the top side of that wall, and cutting back some of that pavement, because it's not really useful. So that would go from essentially the railroad right-of-way, where kind of the, there's some cabinetry there for our traffic signal, that'll obviously be going away with the signal, to kind of make a nicer little planter area there, that'll provide kind of a gateway to the street.
So the stuff that we did as sort of a committee on that is going to be taken into consideration?
Absolutely, yep. There was some talk about some artwork, I wanted a comet-shooting down in the sky, which is kind of squash, but we are looking at potentially putting in some, putting in some?
It's a Brandon thing.
Different, like a sonotube with some bolting, to be able to fix, if there was some community artwork that was gonna be in that area, I think there was three of them proposed. So that was something that we just would put the bases in as part of our work, walk away, and then that can be something that can be utilized in the future for the city, so.
I mean, back to your question, I think about the paving. I know drainage is an issue there, Brandon. And I know we had talked about maybe even paving it the year after, but I mean, how do you think that's gonna work? Would it make more sense to pave it next year?
Probably not with this project, just because we have a MINDOT project, and it's off the MINDOT right-of-way, so.
You'd make it part of the library, if we decided to remodel the library?
Yeah, we do it as a separate project. But going back to the phasing?
Not liquor store, not library.
Yep. This phase will be done towards the end of the project, so kind of there, you know, when we have projects touching, I never like to kind of overlap that, it can be more difficult to add some.
We'd be able to install the stormwater drainage though as part of that?
Yeah, so as part of that, through, we're gonna stub out a storm sewer pipe?
Oh, good.
To accommodate the lack of drainage on that parking area there, so we can incorporate that when we redo the parking lot, we'll regrade that and get that to drain better into our storm sewer system. So we're accommodating the future paving of the liquor store parking lot. It's not included in this project, but we may do it as a separate city project. We'll work through that as we move forward, so.
Okay.
So any other questions regarding the next steps?
All right, perfect.
Our next steps are gonna be, we're gonna have some public engagement. You know, we've had some initial public engagement, it's been some time as we've worked through these roundabouts to kind of solidify them, reach back out to the citizens. We have had some chamber of commerce discussions with the chamber, but wanna bring them back into the conversation to let them know where kind of we're at as we finalize plans, answer any questions, comments, or thoughts that citizens may have. And then we are finalizing ultimately this fall, final construction plans, with the idea that we're gonna start construction, or we are gonna start construction right away this spring. One of the things that we've talked about, just generally, is special assessments for benefiting properties along here. That's something that we probably need to have a future discussion on, special assessments, and what does that mean along there, to keep things consistent with respect to the improvements that we have on here, on this project. You know, obviously, it's a trunk highway, so the highway cost is gonna be borne by MINDOT, but we do have a significant cost for our sewer and water improvements, because that is included in the project. So with the assumption that the council would be moving forward with special assessments for the improvements for the sewer and water as part of that project. So that's what's gonna be happening next as we move things forward, and answer any questions, comments, concerns, or directions you may have, so.
Okay, any questions for Brandon?
Any community outreach to teach about how to drive through some of these? I know some people say they have never actually been through one, or think of high school students that are right now starting their driver's ed for the first time here in town. And there's not a roundabout yet, but there will be one, getting that community out there to let people know that they need to start practicing that.
Absolutely. One of the things, so we do have a website within MINDOT's website, there is one dedicated to Highway 57. So if you go on MINDOT's website, and I can send it off, once we start the next stage of community engagement, because that'll be kind of our point of contact for people that wanna look at stuff online. They have different videos and links to documents about roundabouts and how to drive through them, too. So that's something that MINDOT makes a conscious effort to help the public learn more about roundabouts and how to navigate them, so. Including pedestrians, too, it's a different sort of layout with pedestrians, too. Becoming more and more prevalent, engineers like them, you know, you got a small amount of the population that maybe still doesn't like them, and maybe never will, including probably my father, but they work, and.
Single-lane ones seem to be a little bit easier. I mean, I know like at different places, there's a double lane, or even three-lane ones, and those do get a little messier, but yeah, I think that's definitely something we can do. And you make a good point, you know, if we're looking at something potentially on 16th Street, too, in the future with another roundabout up there, it would be a good idea to try and do some of that public engagement with that.
Absolutely.
So related but unrelated is, you know, the extension from 11th to 16th. Because as soon as this project starts, that's gonna come into severe focus, and there's gonna be questions, so where do we stand with that?
It's on our list, we need to, or on my list, we need to go back and talk to MINDOT. Because they were planning a mill and overlay through this entire corridor, including Manorville. And then we're gonna construct this in 2022. Manorville's gonna reconstruct their kind of urban corridor in 2023. So I need to circle back with MINDOT and figure out when they're gonna kind of close the gaps, if you will, between here and Manorville. Because it was due, you know, a couple of years ago, we kind of interrupted their plan. To your point, it should still be on their radar, so I'll talk to MINDOT on that, and report back on their mill and overlay.
It's not gonna be a huge section that's left. You know, if we do that, if we do the roundabout 16th, I mean, we're gonna stretch that a ways to the south, probably past where those apartments are, for sure, because it's gonna have to get feathered in there, too. So I mean, that definitely is figuring out what that two or three-block section is gonna be. I know that you had talked about mill and overlay, and I don't know if there any infrastructure that we have to relieve? As far as I know, there's no infrastructure on the road, so mill and overlay make much sense there, I don't know.
I think it does, and that's one of the reasons why I didn't really want to get the city involved, just because us getting involved means more, we got more skin in the game, and we really don't have a lot of skin in the game with respect to our private utilities. In MINDOT's view, private utilities. Our public utilities are not within MINDOT right-of-way, they're along that frontage road, along the east side. So it's not a real utility need with that respect. With that said, there could be some need for some mill and overlay or potential upgrades with development on the west side of the road there. We've had some real high-level discussions with that property owner there, not only with the roundabout planned at 16th Street, but any, like it's 13th Street that comes out of that kind of frontage road area there. Do we stub a road across the highway into that other property to the west? And how does that work with whatever the developer's requesting with respect to turn-and-bypass lane, and what MINDOT will kind of make them do, if you will? So that's something that'll be part of that mill and overlay conversation, or do we account for the 13th Street intersection when we do the mill and overlay? Something that we'll bring back to MINDOT and have that conversation.
Perfect. Anything else? Nope, good. Brandon, anything else? Thanks, Brandon.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That should be it.
All right. On to personnel, accept the resignation of Carolyn Brüllington. She's at the liquor store part-time, so I'll make a motion to accept her resignation. One second.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank Carolyn for her service. On to the attorney's report, the first one is the Heeser settlement. We're not closing for that, right?
Um, we had some discussions and were able to reach a tentative agreement with the Heesers as far as resolving that litigation. It was within the parameters that the city had previously sort of set as far as that goes. So we just need you all to vote to approve that settlement. And I don't have those documents in the, I don't think they were in Dropbox, but I can.
Should we do the next meeting then, or?
We can. If you wanna see them, if you wanna see the actual settlement agreement.
Probably should, yeah. I'm sorry, yeah. Think we should probably have it.
Yeah.
Good work. Thank you.
Yeah.
You got the checks.
Good. Thank you very much. Okay, on to, we have a closed session, we're gonna go to a closed session for union negotiations and discuss the Blaine litigation update. Will either of those be recorded?
Um, yeah, the union negotiations.
Okay, we'll be recording the union negotiations, but not the Blaines litigation update. So we'll close the meeting and invite everybody back when we're done. Thank you.